Yeah, that's what it is. That's the miles that surround the city. It's not input.
We're called to order the August meeting of the Marmel Planning Commission. Mr. Grummer, Mr. Ley, can we have the announcements, please?
Yes, so this month, we have some final approvals. Headley Heights subdivision, which was approved last month, they've got that out for signatures, for filing. We had a staff review on Osage Terrace lots 107 and 108 on Marmel Valley Drive. That has been approved and is out for signatures as well. This week, we also had the Tractor Supply groundbreaking. There's a good attendance out there and they're moving along quite well. And then Splash Car Wash is expected to have their grand opening in the very near future.
Thank you, Mr. Ley. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. You've all been provided a copy of the July minutes in your packet. Does anybody have any changes to be made to those minutes?
Yes, sir. Under the motion for approval of the minute, it mentions Commissioner Fisher doing the first and second. I don't believe...
I'm good.
I tried to. I know.
I never doubted.
You underestimate my power.
Well, and again, there was no visual, only voice. It was another male that approved or seconded the approval.
Does anybody want to take credit for that second?
I can verify who that was and get that address. Thank you.
Any other comments? Does anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for City Marmel Planning Commission, July 28, 2022.
Second. The motion and the second. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Does opposed, no? All right, they are approved. Well, we may have public comments on non-agenda items. I have two public comment cards that don't list the subject matter, so Ms. Beverly Edwards, if you could hear. If you could come up for just a second. If it's something that's on our agenda, just let me know and we'll fledge common at the appropriate time. Item number two? Okay. All right, and Mr. Rick Scott? Mr. Scott, which item would you like to comment on?
Commenting on Stone Canyon.
Stone Canyon, yes, sir. All right, as we have no public comments on non-agenda items, I'll open the public hearing. We have no old business, so we will move into new business. Number one, the Osage Hills addition, Phase Seven replat. Staff report, please.
Okay, this is basically a... This was a previous replat that was approved last April and was filed in May. Took four lots into two lots. Since that time, it is not going to work out the way they did, so now they're going back from two lots to three lots. It is coming to the Planning Commission due to the needing to close off a landscape buffer that was along Sagamore Court and an access easement that was coming off Eagle Cove. Those are being vacated. This one is pretty straightforward. They've met all the rules and with the vacation of those easements, they should be clear. And we... Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer, and planning commissioner comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ley. Commissioner, discussion? Any discussions? Anyone have a motion?
I do. I move for approval of the preliminary plat contingent on meeting all city engineer, staff, and planning commissioner comments.
Second.
I have the motion and the second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Does opposed, no? All right, motion passes.
Just to clarify, it says on the agenda, proposed preliminary development plan. It is just a plat, correct?
It is correct. It's just a plat.
Make sure the minutes reflect that as a plat. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. All right, we will move on to item number two, the Stone Canyon addition. And for our public commenters, we'll have the staff report and then I'll allow you to make the comments. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, this is a land use amendment request for Stone Canyon addition, record number LUSE-22-1, agenda item number 2A. This project is proposed land use amendment for 65 plus or minus acres along Old Marmel Road in response to the proposed rezoning of the property from R1 to PRD. Staff initiated the land use amendment pursuant to Section 54-78. Staff proposes an amendment to the master land use plan from single-family detached to special-use residential. Staff initiated the land use amendment per... As the applicant is seeking a multi-density development with a mix of single-family, two-family, and other residential housing types, SUR is a better fit than MFA due to the topography of the property and a proposed park space utilizing an existing query area on the west side of the property for recreational purposes. Per Section 54-73, special-use residential includes lands with unique characteristics like very steep topography or which provide sites for development of less conventional forms of housing. This category is intended to accommodate a variety of housing styles and densities and may include retail commercial activities geared towards residential market. The owner of the property annexed into Marmel anticipating such action would promote the sale of their land. The applicant requesting the rezon is a potential purchaser. Changes in the area include the development of Stone Brook subdivision on the north side of Highway 365, which is spurring an increase in residential development on this side of Marmel. Planning Commission approved a waiver to hear this item last month in July. Staff recommends a due-pass recommendation to Marmel City Council for the proposed amendment to the master zoning map from SFD to SUR, and that is all.
Sorry, just a small correction. I should have been for the amendment to the master land use map. My apologies on that error.
Correct. Sorry about that.
Does that include the staff report?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll now move to public comments. Ms. Edwards? And to remind those making public comments, by rules, we limit public comments to three minutes. And Ms. Edwards, for our record, if you could please state your name and address and you have a floor.
Beverly Edwards, 9411 Edwards Lane.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Could you bring the microphone down, please? Thank you.
I ain't never heard that. Nobody ever said that. Ever. Beverly Edwards, 9411 Edwards Lane.
Thank you.
I'm a little confused on the rezoning. I'm confused about why it is proposed that we rezon again in the special housing that we're talking about. Can this be found somewhere so we can read about special housing or what you're talking about? Is this for, like we said the last time, is this for apartment complexes? Is this for single-family homes? What is this for? The rezoning for?
So the rezoning is for the land use of the area to be used for PRD. The current zoning is an R1, which allows for single-family detached housing. A PRD zone allows for single-family detached housing similar to R1, but also allows for housing types in R2, which is multifamily like duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and then also allows for R3 zoning, could be apartment, so...
Okay, so this is the question that was asked the last time and nobody could answer that because we asked, was it going to be any apartment complexes? Is this going to be low-income apartment complexes? Is this going to cause problems for us on the other side of the road? We asked, it's the last time, and nobody could give us an answer. So now you're saying that it would require... Would open it up for duplexes, apartment complexes, and things of that nature, correct?
So what's being proposed is on the agenda. It's not on this one. It's three items down, the preliminary development plan. And on there, they're showing the types of housing that they're wanting to propose for this PRD.
Okay, so is... Are we going to be taken away from... Because from my understanding, Highway 365 is going to be made into a four-lane highway, so somebody's going to have to lose some land somewhere. Am I correct in that? Because that is on Marmel Forward. That Highway 365 is going to become a four-lane highway.
Well, Marmel Forward is not a regulating plan. That was a vision that was set in 2013. I'm not aware of Arkansas Highway Department with any interest in widening that road at this time, so I'm not aware of that.
Okay, well, that was our question, is that how is it going to affect our living on the other side of the proposed 65 acres?
So Ms. Edwards, as Mr. Grummer has pointed out, we will be going over a development plan as part of this process. And keep in mind that this zoning request that we're dealing with today, this body does a recommendation of that, and that's ultimately going to be decided by city council. So nothing that we do today is going to be final, is set in stone. And so you will get a bit of a preview of what the developer is wanting to do with this property. It's one of those things that if it comes to fruition, it's pretty much going to be what's presented today, but that should give you a pretty good window as to what the desired use of that property is.
And Mr. Chairman, I offer my card. In case you'd like to call me at the office, I can describe in more detail. Any questions and answering questions, yeah?
Mr. Chairman.
That is what they're proposing that they gave to us. You can have that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lattes, I'll give you just a moment. Ms. Edwards, further comment? You still have the floor, if you'd like it.
That's good. No, I'll look over this and I will give you a call because I... You know, the PRDs and all that kind of stuff, we as layman people, we don't understand all that stuff. Y'all understand, we don't. And that's why we want to get a better understanding of what is proposed and what's going to be affecting us as we live on the opposite side of the 65 acres. So I can call you and we can get in there with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Lattes, comment?
Yes, having sat in the audience before, sometimes I think there's confusion with not having knowledge of this, and I'm requesting the permission for the planning director to very briefly explain the plan, the map, the plan, and the plat, because I think that gets confusing to people and they don't know which one to pay attention to.
All right. Yeah, Mr. Grummer, will you give a... Well, as brief as you can, just synopsis of what each of these sub-items is going to do.
So this item that we're discussing right now is the land use plan. That describes the type of uses that the city would like to see constructed on this property. The next item is the zoning map, and the zone is what sets the regulations for the land as to what can be built there according to the land use. Now, this PRD zone, which is basically a PUD, a Planned Unit Development, is where the Planning Commission and the city council actually set the regulations because it's not set in our code of ordinances. So it's a unique... It's a unique zone that allows us to model the criteria of the regulations to meet the needs of the city as well as the community. Item C, the preliminary development plan, that is the plan that actually sets those regulations for what's to be developed. So initially, item C is the item that you really want to look at in detail as to what is to be constructed there. And then the preliminary plat, which is item D, that is the item that actually subdivides the land into individual lots that allows it for sale and pretty much separates out all the parcels.
Mr. Scott, if you'd like to make a comment?
He introduces me, which I like. I'm up on Panther Mountain, which is to the north of here. Abutting Faulkner County, in that area. I actually had a map and some of the things y'all were talking about, and I forgot to bring it. So I could, you know, I could wave it around and show people, ah, right there, there we go. And you can see all those little tiny things in there, little squares, rectangles. Those are the housing things you're going to have. And so we're talking about roughly, we're going to add 1,000 people proposed to this area, along with the townhouses and such. You are not going to be doing... Doesn't look like you have any sidewalks in there. You've got streets. You don't have any paths going through there as the original town was set up to have. You've forgotten all that stuff, right? Nod? No? Anyway, okay. The... And you can probably get an idea that I don't approve of this. I think you're trying to cram too many houses and too many people in here for what was originally a new town. As you go back and study what Marmel was originally, along with Reston, Virginia, and I think there's one down in Kentucky, or not Kentucky, Texas. There's a difference between those two states. But it was... The new town concept was to have a nice place for people to live, and it was oriented towards the people who were living there. I sense a lot of times when I come up and talk to you folks here, planning here in the city council, that we're more interested now in who's going to make money. And I guarantee that most of the people who live here in Marmel are not going to make any money off of this. In fact, it's going to cost them some money. Because you're going to add 1,000 people, you're going to add 1,000 cars, more if you've got teenagers, because everybody's going to have their own car. And you're going to have at least two stoplights along 365, and maybe you're going to have one over there on the old Marmel entrance. And you're going to have a lot of people going in there. And they haven't talked about how big these... You talk about a lot size, but not talking about the houses that are going in there. How big are they? I mean, are we talking about 5,000 square foot houses? Probably not. How about 1,000 square foot houses? Maybe so. Are we talking, you know, what Ms. Edwards was talking about? What kind of people are coming in here? What kind of people are you attracting? What kind of houses are you going to build? And do you really want this? And are you going to be able to face your neighbors when you go back and they say, well, what have you done here? Where'd we get all this traffic? I don't know. But I know it's going to cause us up on Panther Mountain a little problem because it's going to take a couple of stoplights and maybe three or four stoplights to get this. And it will have four lanes coming in here, whether this is not being driven, the four-lane highway, but you're going to have four lanes just because you've increased your traffic.
Time? That's your three minutes. If you want to make a small little parting comment, I'll love that.
Parting comment? Ah, no. I know where I stand.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Do you have another comment coming forward? Go ahead and hand that comment card to Mr. Grummer and she'll go ahead and name an address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make a comment.
Good evening. My name is Loretta Moody. I live on 14214 Land Lane. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm a busy lady, but I'm trying to fit y'all in. Because I think this is just as important to me as it is that young man that just spoke. It, you know, it's not about the money for us. We are a small community. We love hard on each other. We are the kind of people who take care of you when you're sick. You know, we tend to our older people. It may not be Marmel, but Highway 365 is very important to us, and we just don't... We don't know anybody moving by elders that's 90 years old that has to worry about going outside, have to worry about getting beat up because somebody don't have no money to pay their rent. And it really bothers me that we're squeezing all these people in that area, and we're worried about their safety, we're worried about the traffic, because we already have traffic. When there is a wreck on the freeway going toward Conway, Mayflower, I know probably a lot of y'all are familiar, when it wrecks on the freeway, they come through. Highway 365 north, that's the only place they could come. And it is, is a lot. We have children that are coming up in this neighborhood that we worry about, pedophiles, extra pedophiles, because we got some already, okay? We got more pedophiles coming. Y'all talked about putting different sex shops and things like... We are concerned. I don't see none of that over here in Marmel, guys. I don't see none of it. We have older people who are afraid of what's going to happen. They are. They're threatened about their driving. They drive, they go wherever they want to go. But you can just about imagine what it feels like to them. I want y'all to please consider them, consider those older people. Because you know what? We all, as I look around, we're not young anymore. And it can very well be you next time, okay? So please consider what we're doing. It's not just about money, it's about loving on each other. If we haven't seen nothing else, we've seen it this year. Look at everything that's happening around y'all. Pay attention, be aware, because things will get even worse if we are just in there for the money. And that's all I want to say, just be considerate. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're young enough to be...
All right, I have no other public comment cards, so we'll move into discussion of subitem A, the amendment to the master land use plan. Commissioner, discussion? Actually, no discussion. Madam City Attorney, could you please provide your commentary for the record about the interplay of these four items and contingencies of one upon the other?
So, and just to add a little more to what Mr. Grummer said, the master land use plan is the whole basis in the law of how we can zone and how we can regulate uses of land that are owned by private parties. That are owned by private parties. And so that is our overview, right? That the city should have a plan of how in certain areas, there should be commercial use, in certain areas, there should be industrial use, in certain areas, they should be devoted to residential use. And those are to be, you know, given thought, and it's a... The plan itself is a combination of our code sections on land use plans and also the map itself. And that's supposed to designate sort of a high-level overview of what a harmonious community looks like when we're designing land use for our community. You know, you think of it kind of like you have a budget, okay? So 30% of my money is going to go to housing and utilities. This amount is going to go to food, this and that kind of thing. It's kind of like a budget for land use in a city. How much do we want devoted to commercial? How much do we want devoted to residential? What types of residential? And where do they flow together? Where they all operate together in a harmonious way and where it's in the best interest of citizens? And then when you look at zoning, it gets a little more specific. Within those land uses, what are the individual, the more specific uses in those categories? And the purpose of zoning is stated in 94-2, and it says, "The purpose of the regulations set forth in this chapter," which that's the whole zoning chapter, "are to, one, promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city; two, provide efficient and economical means for civic development; three, secure safety from fire and panic," which we always, you know, in any situation like this, we always hear from our fire marshal because we want to make sure that it's designed in a way that fire trucks can get in and out when they need to and handle emergencies; four, control overcrowding of land," which is one thing that I think we have heard some concerns about tonight; five, provide adequate light and ventilation so that we don't have, you know, tall buildings right next to small buildings and they crowd out and don't get any sunlight; six, avoid concentration of population so that we don't have, you know, again, a lot of people in a small area all trying to get through a little funnel of traffic somewhere; and seven, facilitate ease of provision of transportation, parks, utilities, schools, and other public requirements. We want to make sure that everyone has access to all those things, all those good public amenities. So those are all the purposes stated in our zoning chapter for why we do zoning. And anytime we're considering a change to land use and zoning, that's what we need to keep in mind. We need to be thinking about those factors. How does it affect those seven items there with that purpose? And then I believe Mr. Grummer also addressed the more other specific factors that are included in the zoning chapter. The Planning Commission and the city council reviewed the proposal and based their decision using the following guidelines. If you're looking at making a change in the plan that we have overall, you look at number one, other changes that have occurred in the neighborhood since the land use plan was adopted or the latest amendment was enacted; two, whether these changes resulted in a change to the neighborhood's character, this is the surrounding neighborhood of the property in question, sufficiently to justify the proposed land use plan change; c, issues and concerns raised by the neighborhood, like those we heard tonight, when submitted with sufficient specificity to enable the commission or council to respond to the issues; and d, other substantial or technical evidence that any proponent or opponent of proposed change submits. So these are the types of factors that the commission and ultimately the city council need to consider on when making a decision about land use and zoning changes. The preliminary development plan is item number C. A preliminary development plan is something that is required anytime you're setting out a plan in a planned unit development. A subcategory of planned unit development is PRD, which y'all have heard that acronym. I know nobody knows what it means. It's Planned Residential District, okay? So if you have a planned residential district, it's supposed to be kind of a community within itself. And the preliminary development plan is to bind that portion that's zoned PRD to set out, for example, sometimes setback lines are not the same as they would be in a single-family residential development. What that plan is supposed to do is to take into consideration all the guidelines we have in similar zones in our code and to use those as a guide. So if the single-family residential standard, and I'm not going to remember all these correctly, is 25 feet for a setback in R1, that should be basically the guide if we're going to do single-family type housing in a planned residential district. But there are some allowances. If you have certain types of areas that are on more open space, then your setback might not be exactly the same because you're going to have access to that green space surrounding that home. And then that is to be binding on that development, that preliminary development plan, right? So even if it changes ownership, the new owner should be sticking to the commitment of that preliminary development plan. And then the plat that will be also considered allows for the subdivision into those little lots that are identified so that it can then be sold to individual builders if the same person is not both building and developing this particular development. PRD is really designed for situations where primarily the developer is also going to be the builder, right? So it's a big picture. They've got this big picture for this community that they're going to start, and they give us examples of the types of structures that are going to be there. They're really supposed to identify like the location of those structures in the preliminary development plan, particularly if it's in a commercial type of planned unit development, and they're going to give us all those locations and those structures. But that's also a good thing to have in a residential area as well. I'm sure I said far more than you ever anticipated, but if there are any other questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
One thing in particular, the proposed preliminary development plan, that is wholly contingent on the zoning as well as the annexation and coming in zoning of the parcel that's not within city limits, correct?
Correct. So we only consider preliminary development plan in certain... In a planned unit development. We don't do a preliminary development plan if it's just R1, which is what this is currently zoned. So there's no need to... If it's not rezoned, there's no need to consider preliminary development plan at all.
So effectively, if we do approve this this evening and the zoning does not go through, the approval is effectively null?
So the only way that this can... The preliminary development plan can be approved, which we discussed this at the subcommittee meeting, was if it is contingent on the land use and the rezoning and the zoning being amended to the SUR PRD designations.
Mr. Chairman, may I make some clarifications for...
Ms, Mr. Chair, may I make some clarifications for a moment, please? All right, first off, this is the land use, uh, this is item A, land use. And the land use, uh, is being requested to change for the area in yellow that's on the screen, which is actually inside the city and is exist, zoned R1. We're not discussing the land in the county at this point in time or the preliminary development plan. We're discussing a re, land use change and a, and a rezoning for the area that is inside the city limits.
He, he just asked me to address all the items and how they interrelate, so that was why I talked about that.
So, and you, you did provide a direct, uh, response to my questions, I'm thankful for that. So going back to the master land use plan, specifically sub item A, Commissioner, discussion, please?
Mr. Chair, just to address the, the public comment, is currently zoned as R1, we would not be able to control a thousand, two thousand, three thousand, or four thousand square foot homes. We don't have that flexibility to do so, unless I'm wrong in that, in that zoning. So, you know, we, if, if it keeps its current zoning, uh, regardless, I just wanted to make that clarification. We would have no control, uh, as it's currently zoned. We do have the ability to have some more control regarding the size and the type of housing if, if we go to an SUR. And that's just based upon the flexibility of it being a PRD. We do have more input, uh, and we do have a little bit more control, uh, emphasis suggestion to the developers as they come in and based upon that it is a, an SUR rather than a R1. Because a R1, a thousand square foot home can be there by right, uh, meaning that they just pull a building permit, they do the subdivision, and they go to work. With an SUR, that's not the case. So we, we do have, I'm not saying that it is more restrictive necessarily. It just provides us, uh, an ability to have a little bit more emphasis and control on the development as a useful.
To provide a bit more clarification, Commissioner Johnson's, uh, comment, uh, his comment that we cannot restrict the size and, I guess, visual look of, of structures in an R1 zoning. Because this is a, a new zone, this land just came into the city within the past twelve months and was zoned R1. You know, by state law, we can't regulate the appearance or the size of these, these houses. The only restriction which might be different than, uh, the special use residential, like PRD, is that they would be detached houses, but they could, they could be detached six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred square foot houses. They could be four to five thousand square foot houses in this zoning. But as Commissioner Johnson said, we are bound by state law that, you know, the restriction to detached housing is the only restriction in this, uh, R1 zoning. And that's, that's as it is now. We would potentially be afforded more opportunity to provide some, some guide rails on this if it were, uh, to go through as a, uh, PRD.
And Mr. Chair, may I remind all commissioners, everyone to speak into the microphones when you're speaking, so that, uh, everyone can hear. Thank you.
Just to clarify that a little bit, though, uh, the, in R1, there are open space requirements, there are setback requirements, there are lot size and density requirements. So it, not, true, we cannot regulate the size of the home, but there, there are some provisions there that do regulate the size of the lots.
Fair, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Landis?
Yes, um, looking at the materials provided by staff, it states there's four guidelines that we have to use to make the decision to change the land use map. Mr. Director, could you please elaborate on which guideline you think is appropriate and that you use to make your recommendation?
My recommendation is based upon the changes that are happening in the area. Now, it may not necessarily be changes since the last amendment, but, uh, across, uh, three sixty-five is a residential development that is being developed to single-family standards. Uh, that is large estate style, but, um, the PRD does provide more flexibility for the commission and the city council to make decisions, so.
Further discussion? Mr. Andrews, something to say?
Roy Andrews, Three Monarch Drive, representing the, um, development. And just, if I could, it's, it's kind of addressing some of the questions that were asked. It's not specifically about the land use plan, but might provide a little bit of clarification. So I think the map that was mentioned before strict, um, just showed the lot layout, didn't show the sidewalks and trails that are being proposed within the development. Do note that an R1 will, would allow approximately five hundred and ten lots by right. We are, um, by switching to the PRD, looking at four hundred and six lots right now. What the PRD allows, which, uh, Ms. Krebs brought up, allows us to change setbacks, that allows us to actually go to a larger green space than we would have with R1. Uh, we're actually proposing, um, twenty-eight acres of green space. If you look at the squiggly lines in the middle, those are all trails within that existing quarry. Um, proposing some kind of bike trails within that. The other dark lines that connect down close to the railroad tracks, we propose a connection that ultimately could get us back to the greenway that the city is working on with Metro Plan. So we are proposing that this would be connected, uh, with Marmel and, um, to the lands to the north as well. As far as house sizes go, uh, yes, there is a restriction with R1. We're looking at roughly, uh, twelve hundred to eighteen hundred square foot housing in this development.
Mr. Andrews, the four hundred some odd, uh, number of lots number, is that inclusive of the property that's not yet in city limits?
Yes, it is. It does, it includes both what's inside the city and outside. And the land that is outside the city, we have started that annexation process.
Any questions, Mr. Andrews? Further questions or comments from the commission?
Just, I keep getting, I won't stay here, and I don't know, I'm not an IT guy, so it's just not trying to get. So I'll, I'll speak, probably. So, uh, just to make sure from the processes that, uh, this, the section that's not, so, isn't under consideration, but obviously we have drawings of it, that, that's, uh, that's currently to the north, uh, of the single-family detached. So they're going to have to come back through the same process. So when they come in and they annex, I shouldn't say that, I, I'm wrong in saying.
Similar process, I would say.
Similar process, but they'll have to come in and, uh, annex, and at that point in time, they'll zone SUR? Don't know.
Can you do that right?
So if we, uh-
It's just like we're, I'm not going to get ahead, I just want some clarification, the city attorney. We've got this development, and when I was reviewing it, I understand the intent. I don't know if it's a cart before the horse, uh, situation here, but, and then Scott even, or Mr. Grummer even mentioned to that, that, you know, we're just here, but it, it all kind of fits together. So we, we approve. The only concern here is that we're, I think that we're moving forward with the zoning to go to SUR with the understanding that the annexation is going to come in, um, and, and which is a very critical component. So, you know, and I don't know if you make it contingent on that. It's a little messy, it's a little messy.
Yes, the preliminary development plan cannot be approved finally by the council until, it would have to be contingent on the annexation, obviously. I mean, we can't impose a preliminary development plan in ETJ, so.
So ultimately, this is, the, the preliminary development plan would have to be contingent on not just the rezoning and amendment to the master land use map, but the annexation and the, uh, that land coming in under appropriate land use and zoning, correct?
Correct.
And I'm not for sure that the, the master land use map and the master zoning map is also contingent of that coming in as SUR. I don't know.
It's a lot of moving parts.
Yes, it is. And, and, and I know, we, you know, as far as the development moving through, and it, it seems like it's a little, it's not that I support or don't support, uh, just the timing of things seems a little bit out of whack. And I wasn't at subcommittee meeting, I would've said the same thing if I was there, but I apologize.
We have another public comment card. Uh, Ms. Regina? Name an address for the record, please, and you have four. Three minutes.
That's another thing we do on outside of the track. We do talk. Uh, so my name is Regina Eruberay. I'm at fourteen oh one oh Old Marmel Road. I've been at that residence for over thirty years. I like that residence because it's quiet and it's country. So I guess my thing is if I wanted to live in the city, Little Rock North, Little Rock, Bryant Benton, Marmel, I probably would have moved there. Uh, it's land that's been hereditary, handed down through the generations. And with this new housing, I'm like the gentleman here. I'm not for it and I'm not against it. Uh, but my thing is this, when you start talking about zoning, rezoning, annexing, tracks open, tracks closed, can't go through, can come through, trails. There's some savory people that live there now, but I don't know who's coming in. I can't control who is coming in and out. That's not my thing. I stay prayed up, for one thing. I'm not worried about it. But the thing is this, the amenities that you all are talking about are for the development that's coming up, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
They would be, yes.
Yeah, okay. Now, y'all don't have to be slow to answer these questions, they're simple. So I'm just trying to figure out how are these, how would they affect us who are not zoned in or annexed in with this new proposed housing development? How, how are we going to be affected? Uh, like, right now, one of the meetings I came to earlier, they said that Pulaski County will still pick up Pulaski County trash if you're on that left side of the street. Then Marmel, I guess, is going to pick up Marmel's trash, but will they come down to Old Marmel Road where I live and go up on Presimmon Lane, which is the proposed entry, I'm thinking? So I'm just trying, it's a lot of unknown questions that we are generally concerned about when it comes to things happening in our neighborhood. I, I know, I just want everything to be right. And I want us to be treated fairly. I don't want eminent domain to come in and say, oh, your house has got to, you're going to be a part of Marmel and you got to live up to the standard and you got to pay the city codes and you got to do that. We don't want that. We have graciously been given grace to live there for as long as we have, without any, you know, upsets. We know progress happened, you know, we, we get old, that's progress right there. We're getting, every day, we're getting older. So I just, you know, the zoning, the taxing, the voting, this new house development that's there now, that you're saying is estate-like homes, has made my taxes go up fifty dollars. So with that, you know, with, like you said, we have some elders. Can they pay fifty dollars? Don't ding that bell on me, I'm going to sit down.
Thank you for your comments.
Further discussion?
The other question, just to address mine, and I guess this is for, for applicant, is that, you know, the, the, the development that you have forthcoming, if I understand it right, the access is through the, uh, I guess, the annexation in question, right? You do not, you're not taking access through the commercial pieces presented on the, the board here.
That is correct.
Yeah. So if we were to prove, or if we were to move forward with the, the master land use map and then the zoning map, I think we have to consider it in contingent with the commercial property and not anything else. That does not provide access, because it's currently shown. I don't know how you can, it's not annexed in, man. You just, you don't know.
Additive list contingencies?
I don't know, it's a mess, so. I wish it was cleaner, I, I really do, but I, I wish it was, so.
All right, thank you. So, uh, the contingencies are on the preliminary development plan and the plat. As far as the zoning, whether if this is zoned R1 or R2 or PRD, right now, it, it maintains access from Old Marmel Road. So the development plan does stipulate where the access comes from, but like you said, there are contingencies to that. That's placed on the development plan, not the land use or in the zoning. I will also, to answer your question, as far as the lineup, we discussed that in subcommittee. And I place that based on the city attorney's, uh, recommendation. Um, the land use and the rezon, and the zoning, uh, can move forward if it's approved or whatever your recommendation is. That's three readings at city council, and typically the development plan would be read and come in the same final reading with the zoning. So if the development plan is not approved, then I would assume that the applicant would withdraw their zoning possibly, or they may want to leave it as the zone, but.
Further discussion? Does anyone have a motion on sub item A?
Chairman, I make a motion for a do-pass recommendation, uh, to change the master land use map from SFD to SUR.
Ms, Ms. Fisher, would you mind restating your motion?
Speak up a little louder. I recommend a do-pass recommendation to the city council to amend the master land use map from SFD to SUR.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no?
No.
A vote of six to one, we will issue a do-pass recommendation to city council and to those in the audience. This is a recommendation to the city council, and this matter will be taken up by our city council with multiple readings for its actual implementation or denial. Okay, moving on to sub item B, the proposed amendment to the master zoning map. We have a, an additional staff report on this one?
Mr. Chair, this is a request, uh, from the previous land use. This is a request for rezone from an R1, single-family detached zoning to a PRD, planned residential district. Uh, previously, um, it was zoned or designated ETJ, uh, land use with county zoning, um, before annexation. Annexation was brought in as R1, and again, you approved a waiver last month to hear this. Staff recommends a do-pass recommendation to city council for the proposed amendment to the master zoning map for R1 to PRD. That's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any discussion from the commission? Does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion for, to, uh, approve the master zoning map for Stone Canyon.
A do-pass. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no?
No.
All right, another vote of six to one, we will issue a do-pass recommendation to city council. And again, this will be, uh, dealt with by, uh, city council before a final decision is made. Moving on to item two C, the proposed preliminary development plan. This is, you know, kind of the, the meat of this. Staff report, please?
Mr. Chair, this is, uh, all commissioners received a staff report for Stone Canyon addition. Record number sub twenty-two dash seventeen, this is agenda item, uh, in the report covers agenda two C and, uh, number D. Uh, the location is at twenty-seven, twenty-three seven oh five Highway three sixty-five. Uh, it's eighty-six acres. It's, uh, the number of proposed lots are four hundred and seven lots, uh, lots per gross acre at five point four one. Uh, the current zoning, uh, on a portion of the land is R1. The other portion is, uh, in the county, uh, and is requesting a PRD and annexation, um, for that PRD. Uh, land use, again, is S, is SFD in the city portion, and the county portion is requesting SUR with the annexation. Uh, the proposal has thirty percent open space, and, um, so from a background standpoint, applicant proposes a four hundred and seven lot planned residential development comprised of two hundred and fifty-eight single-family lots, which is about sixty-three point five percent of the housing development, and a hundred and forty-eight townhome lots, which would be about thirty-six point five percent, arranged around a central open space of ten and a half acres having walking and biking trails. A portion of this development is within the ETJ, with the majority of the development recently annexed into the city with an R1 zone. So an amendment to the master zoning and land use maps have been submitted along with this request. The applicant, uh, is proposing to devote approximately twenty-six acres of the entire development to open space for drainage and trail system updates. Uh, the proposed drainage detention may reduce flooding to areas to the east along Old Marmel Road. Road, which currently gets significant impacts from current storm events, according to local residents in prior meetings. The proposed trail systems are utilizing existing terrain and features, along with proposed trail connections along the railroad for adjacent properties to connect in and potentially increase trail connectivity in the area. The request for mixture of single-family and townhomes would allow more units to accommodate the use of land for these added benefits. The applicant has indicated that if built to R1 standards with zero lot line by right, they could achieve more units than is being proposed, but would lose the natural amenities being proposed in this development. Staff is, staff is supportive of the overall concept and utilization of the land, but needs additional time for review. Public comments have been received. Prior to this report being issued, we had two inquiries only with no comments. After the report was issued, we received, on the 24th, we had two, four, that were excited for the development, and one that came in that was against. And then, on the 25th, we received one from a developer that was for, and then, an adjacent landowner to the west is also for it, based on the potential for him having connectivity. At the time of the report, we had not received comments from the city engineer. After the report was put out, he include, he provided a comment to include detention area in the preliminary plat for engineering review and approval. The fire department comments, fire hydrant placement is good, acknowledged emergency access on the loop on the latest revision. That is pertaining to the loop, the loop area. The number of units exceeded thirty housing units, and the fire marshal was requesting a secondary ingress, egress for that. Of course, that phase is, three phases down, and would be developed later on, but he's shown on the new plat an access point off of the corner of the loop to the west, and satisfied the fire marshal's comments. Public works sanitation can serve all streets and drainage to be dedicated to the city. Utility comments have been provided. County planning office have provided their comments, but one of the items for this is that the applicant has requested annexation into the city, wanting the city to review all of the civil plans, as well as having the, everything within the development to be annexed, or be dedicated into the city. With that, staff has recommended plat notes, which is provided in your report. I won't go over in detail, but in summary, it makes contingencies, one of those being the, first off, the street and drainage plans would be reviewed by the city of Maumell, not the county. If this does not get annexed into the city, then the applicant would have to go back through the process to get the reviews from the county for approval. The installation of street and drainage improvements, that we typically run dedication of those following a preliminary plat, but due to phase one and two being in the county with the intention to annex in, then any dedication ordinance for that would only be run after annexation happens. So, that's one of the contingencies. Number four, with the residential development, that pretty much states the number of access points needed. You've got two access, one off 365, which again, is coming through county property, which has to be annexed in before it's developed. The secondary would be off of Old Maumell Road. The phases that would connect all, Old Maumell Road are later phases and would not be developed at first, so the first developments that would happen would actually come off of 365. So, impacts to Old Maumell Road, as far as traffic on that, would come later years during future phases. And then, and that's the, pretty much, the majority of the comments. Other than that, I provided other items on staff comments that we've recommended that we still need for review. I'll also point out that my recommendation was a denial of the proposed preliminary development plan for Stone Canyon subdivision, although, just let me clarify why my recommendation was that. I did recommend a review time of sixty days on this, the applicant, based on the fact that they had to come through with the waiver, and they lost a month, wanted the review to be discussed today. So, to bring it to planning commission, it had to either be an approval or denial. Felt like I didn't have enough time for the full review. I gave it the best that I could and provided you with that information, but because I'm requesting additional time on the development plan, I've, I placed a staff recommendation on that side. You, it's your choice whether the comments that we have today are sufficient for you to pass the development plan through. Otherwise, staff recommends on that. Concludes my comments, thank you.
Mr. Scott, you filled out a comment card, this is within the same sub item, yes, you may ask a question. If you, if you could come up to the podium, please, so we can be heard.
You're gonna make me walk.
If you can talk really loud, you can do it right there.
Oh, well, I'll go up there now. This area to be annexed, how many people live there?
It's a greenfield, there's no, that I'm aware of, anyone that lives in that land.
There are no people living there?
There does not appear to be any structures on that property right now. Roy, do you know, is there any structure on that property?
No tents, leaning twos, wicky ups. Okay, just curious.
Mr. Mosley, your comment?
Yeah, I had kind of a question here.
Name and address, please.
My name is Steve Mosley, 16 Riverwood Place in Maumell. It's, and I'm an alderman for Ward One. I'm just curious, I mentioned this at one point, and it hadn't really been looked into at the point, but will Maumell, Old Maumell Road need upgrading as a result of all this development? And if so, is that one of the things you're still having to look at, that you'd like to review? Because I think that needs careful consideration to make sure that, if it does need upgrading, that the developer will, will pay for that, so. And that's all I've got to say. But thank you.
Mr. Grummer, is, is that the case? Do you anticipate Old Maumell Road will need to be widened, upgraded, anything like that?
Unfortunately, my public works director has been out on FMLA, so I haven't had a chance to get all that addressed yet. So, that's one of the items that we still need to review.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Landis?
Yes. I was surprised to see a staff recommendation of denial, and asked questions of why that was, and it was because additional time was needed. And I think a recommendation to defer, if more time is needed, would be more appropriate. So, when it comes time to make a motion, I'll be making a motion to defer this to our next regularly scheduled meeting. And the reason is, there is a, I checked with the director, all the documents have been submitted by the applicant, but there needs additional time to review. I don't know how we can go ahead and consider approving something, where we don't have anything from the city engineer. We're hearing that there's a gap of information from the public works director, and as much as I know applicants are always anxious to go forward, I think it would be irresponsible to do so until we get a recommendation from our professional staff.
Mr. Andrews, the applicant, have a response to that?
Roy Andrews, 3 Monarch Drive. Yes, and I appreciate your comment. We do understand that it is a big development with a lot of moving pieces, as y'all stated And as much as we did lose a month, and we want to see it go forward, there are time limits on it, and we would request that this be tabled to next month, so that city staff has time to do their due diligence. And we would certainly welcome any commissioner comments that could help us and staff move forward, so that maybe next month, it could be less of a discussion, or at least, you know, be able to answer your questions before we get there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrews? Former Commissioner Andrews. All habits. In light of Mr. Andrews' comments, does anybody have a motion?
One question first, are we deferring or tabling both C and D preliminary plat and the development plan? Was that your...
We would, yes, we would request that they, they're very similar in nature that you tabled both.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Make a motion, Ms. Landis?
Yes, I make a motion to defer the preliminary development plan and the preliminary plat, as we've discussed, to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Motion in multiple seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Sub item C and D will be dealt with as old business at our next meeting. Now, move on to item number three, the Burkehalter Business Park Edition. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, commissioners received a staff report for, let's see, Burkehalter Lot Two, preliminary, preliminary plat, record number sub 22-16, which is agenda item 3A. Area is thirteen point one six one acres, number of proposed lots is one, current zoning is I-1, and land use is industrial. The applicant proposes plating of Lot Two and the Burkehalter subdivision of Murphy Industrial Park. The proposed one-lot subdivision meets all requirements of subdivision review. Drainage and detention will be reviewed and approved with subdivision of building plans. Drainage and detention is situated on the west side of the lot. There's been no, no comments on this one. City engineer, drainage and detention will be reviewed with submission of building plan review. No further utility comments, and the one staff comment is clarifying the side, the rear and side setbacks conflicting notes versus what was shown on the plat, and then removing contours and parking and building submission on the final plat. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer, and planning commissioner comments.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Commissioner, discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Dunson?
Thank you. Is the cell tower leased property within the, within the plat? Is it, or does he, does, does he know?
Mr. Andrews?
Roy Andrews, 3 Monarch Drive. It's my understanding that that is not a separate lot, that it is part of the overall parcel.
And there's no, so the applicant doesn't desire to separate that as a separate lot?
It, it would be too small.
For industrial?
Yes.
I see.
It would complicate things.
So, the question is, is the fifty-foot, or is the building line setback required from property? I don't know, I just don't know exactly how, I don't think we can, so they can build all the way to the property line, the fifty feet, it, it doesn't matter if that structure's there or not. It's not a separate plot, it's not a separate lot. Right? Do you have an existing, you know, it almost is within the setback as it is.
The fencing is, yes, it is.
Yeah, I guess the main thing is the hut actually in the fifty-foot, that's a good catch, Mr. Dunson, and that's a pre-existing building. And I think the problem, issue was, they thought that was on a separate lot, or deeded separately, and I've come to find out, it's all on this, exact, on that same lot. I would say if the hut is outside the fifty-foot, then it should be okay, because you can have fencing, of course, inside the building setback. Could that be, could that be clarified on the final plat?
So, you, so you can't create a lot there based upon the, the lot requirements for, this is industrial, right?
Yes, it is.
So, it's too small?
And then it throws another setback, building setback on that line.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Does anyone have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Burkehalter Business Park Edition at 400 Sharkey Drive and Burkehalter Drive, pending the other commissioner staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Motion approved, we'll now move on to sub item B, the proposed site plan. Do we have any further staff report?
Staff report for the site plan review package, record for record number STP 22-11. That report includes both sub items B and C. Again, thirteen acres, it's for the previous plat that you just approved, current zoning I-1 and industrial. The proposed building square footage is a hundred and seventy thousand square feet, two different, two separate buildings, with a proposed coverage of thirty-one point six percent. On the site and drainage plan, it's, it's met all staff comments, and it's pretty standard. So, the staff recommendation is approval contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer, and planning commissioner comments. Jason, do you have any other comments on that?
The only comments, when they originally came in with the plan, the building height was proposed to be seventy-five feet, upon seeing that, and telling the applicant that if they did a seventy-five-foot tall building, they would have a hundred and twenty-five-foot building setback, they graciously decided to drop the building height down to fifty feet. The only other comment I have is the parking, two hundred and fifty-one spots should be more than sufficient for these two structures. However, that could be modified, as they know what type of tenants they're gonna have, as, as our parking minimum requirements go off of the number of employees, and at this point, the applicant does not know the number of employees, so it's real hard to get a accurate count of parking spaces. But two hundred and fifty-one should be sufficient for the size, the size of buildings. To kind of give a estimate, for instance, traction supply, which is a roughly seven, eight times the size of these two structures, they had about six hundred spots. So, two hundred and fifty-one should be more than sufficient to meet our minimum requirements.
Any discussion from the commission? Here we go, does anyone have a motion?
I make a motion. I'll make a motion for recommend approval for the proposed site point of the Burkehalter Business Park Edition.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, motion is approved. Moving on to sub item C, the proposed landscape plan. Is there any further staff report?
Jason, do you have any comments on that?
Really, no further comments. We have addressed in some comments to the applicant to just be wary of existing, the existing utilities already in the ground. There is a gas line that runs along, runs around the front of the property, excuse me, along Burkehalter and Sharkey Drive, as well as there's overhead power running along Sharkey Drive. So, they just need to be very cognizant of, obviously, that means the type of trees to put in. We all love our canopy trees, but you can't put a canopy tree under a power line, and just as they're planting trees and other shrubs and whatnot to meet our landscaping plan, just be wary of the existing utilities. So, any modifications would probably come down the road if, if they can't meet exactly what they've shown on the plan, and at that point, we can see if it needs to come back to planning commission, or if it's small enough, it can be done at staff level.
Thank you, Ms. Landis. Any discussion from the commission?
They would appear on the landscaping plan that they kind of isolated the cell tower where that thing sits at. Looks like it's a good idea. Motion to approve the landscaping plan for Burkehalter Park Edition. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Landscape plan is approved. Moving on to item number four, the Harrison Pfeiffer and Triad Victus Replat. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, this is staff report for Harrison Pfeiffer and Triad Victus Replat, your record number sub 22-18, agenda item 4A. The location is, stated on the report incorrectly, not Maumell Boulevard, it's actually between Commercial Park Drive and Murphy Drive. The area is thirteen point one acres. The area is thirteen point one acres, right now existing is two lots, and they're proposing a merger into one lot. The zoning for this is both I-1 and C-2 on separate parcels, and the land use is industrial and commercial. The, the land use and the zoning is already with the city council, so that's already moving through its readings. You recommended to do pass on those last month. The applicant proposes a replat combining of the previously approved Harrison Pfeiffer Edition preliminary plat along Commercial Park Drive and the western portion of the approved preliminary plat for Triavictus replat, Lot 1B along Murphy Drive, to expand the commercial portion of Harrison Pfeiffer by merging Lot 1B of Triavictus into Lot 2, Block 8 Harrison Pfeiffer. Grading permit has also been submitted, which is the next item on the agenda, to allow this additional area to be added into the overall grading that's previously approved with the Harrison Pfeiffer Edition. Utility comments have been received and provided to you, planning comments, the final plat approval is contingent on all of Lot 8 being zoned, C-2 rezoning approval is currently in progress with the first reading on eight fifteen of 2022. And then Commercial Park Drive should be shown as right-of-way, not an access easement. Staff recommends approval contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer, and planning commission comments, and that's all. Jason, do you have anything else I missed?
Do we have any Commissioner discussion? The first item in particular is the plat revision, preliminary plat revision. No discussion, does anyone have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the preliminary plat revision for Harrison Pfeiffer and Triavictus replat, pending any other staff or Commissioner comments.
Second.
Contingent on the rezoning, that is currently in process with council. Thank you, ma'am.
Second still standing?
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Motion in a second, any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Motion is approved, we'll now move on to sub item B, the grading permit, any proposed grading permit? Do we have any further staff report?
So Commissioners, I apologize, the grading permit is certainly something new with the city that we just approved this year. We didn't have a, a, an actual, didn't have it set up in the system when this came through, so we don't have a separate report for you, so I've added that in on this Agenda Item. You've been provided the, the grading details, as well as the tree, the tree protection plan. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer, discussion from the Commission?
This is the first plat, this is the first grading permit under the new ordinance, correct?
It is correct, and we're going to be developing that permit process, getting all the details. But the, the thing about this one is, the area that's showing along Murphy Drive, a lot of that was already excavated out from a previous, so there's not a lot of tree canopy in there, it's pretty much dug out. And, but there is tree canopy that is bordering the property, which is where they're provi, they're proposing that those are the non-construction areas, so they're proposing leaving that up as buffers. The main impact is the ridge line that was separating the previous Harrison Pfeiffer to the Triavictus. They're trying to utilize that, so that would come over, but in the grading plan, it shows how that's, how the final elevations would be set up.
Further discussion? Does anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve the proposed grading permit for Harrison Pfeiffer and Triavictus replat, pending other Commissioner or staff comments, and I guess pending the rezoning issue at hand with the city council.
Second.
Put the motion in a second, any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Motion is approved, now moving on to item number five, the Newton Creek Commercial Edition. Staff report please.
Mr. Chair, this is staff report for Newton Creek Commercial, your record number sub dash twenty-two dash nineteen, on the Agenda Item of 5A. This is an area of approximately two hundred and thirty-six acres, it's located at sixty-three twenty-four Hudman Road, but it's actually the portion of land that is on the eastern side of the third interchange off of I-40. Currently, the land use is ETJ in the extraterritorial jurisdiction located in the county. The applicant proposes a two lot subdivision within the city's ETJ for the purpose of constructing an extension to White Oak Crossing on the east side of White Oak Interchange. I'll give a little bit of background on this. The city planning and administrative staff, along with county planning and public work staff, met and discussed the appropriate alignments for connection of the proposed White Oak, White Oak Extension to Highway 365, considering the Union Pacific Railroad location in proximity to Highway 365. Now, currently, the property owner does not have access to this property from the interchange. The Arkansas Department of Highway and Transportation has restricted access through until they can show direct connection to 365, which is one of the reasons for this plat. When we met with the county, we discussed, and on our past master street plan, which has actually been amended, but it still shows on North Little Rocks and the county's master street plan, a direct connection to Oak Grove Road. And Jason, is there any chance you could pull the, maybe the map up to kind of show? A direct connection to Oak Grove Road would take White Oak Crossing directly into Oak Grove eventually and connect to 365, but it was determined that you would have to cross over both the railroad and 365, and then come back and have, it would, that's where the Oak Grove's central business district, district is located, and it would be pretty much devastating to that area. So that was not recommended. Currently on our master street plan, there's, we show an alignment at Tolliver Lane, which is a little bit further south from Oak Grove Road. But also there, at that connection, to get over the railroad, there's not enough space between the railroad and 365 to have an at-grade connection to 365, so that was not recommended. Number three, the connection to Trap Road, which is a little further south. Trap Road is the widest point between the railroad and 365, and according to the engineers that were there at the time, determined that between six hundred and fifty to six hundred and seventy-five feet is the sweet spot to be able to get over the railroad efficiently and be able to get back down to an at-grade cross, at, at-grade connection to 365. So that was the preferred location. Now, what, what you saw at the subcommittee meeting showed this road going and connecting to Hudman Road. Well Hudman Road is an at-grade crossing at the railroad that currently exists, but they had shown an actual arterial connection through there to try to meet the needs of the RDOT. Because that at-grade crossing is just a small local road to access for the current residents over there, we recommended that they downgrade that to a local-sized road, fifty-foot right-of-way, which doesn't have to be shown on the master street plan, and the intention is that not to be an arterial connection or a main connection to 365, it's meant strictly to meet certain requirements that RDOT provided them, saying they needed a connection to 365. This new, which is a revision, since the subcommittee, which is what you've seen, shows a proposed further connection through that second roundabout to the south, which goes around and actually comes in and would align with the Trap Road connection. Now that's not on our master street plan, so it's right now just shown as a proposed road that eventually would have to be placed in here, but based on this plat, they're showing proposed right-of-way dedication to provide a direct connection to 365, but then we're also showing a future proposed location of where the city and the county have agreed that the proper arterial connection to extend White Oak would be. So with that being said, the applicant has proposed right-of-way which conforms to the master street plan, with up to one hundred feet, feet of right-of-way proposing to increase the section on the MSP from a collector to a minor arterial. Currently, that, that north-south leg that he's showing there between the two roundabouts, on our master street plan, that currently shows a collector. So we're proposing an amendment to the master street plan to upgrade that to an arterial, but it is a connection, so they're actually providing sufficient right-of-way on this plat to accommodate that future change if you so, if the city council so chooses, and you do. Staff supports that proposal of classification upgrade. In addition, both the city and the county staff agree with the revised alignment to Trap Road and recommend an amendment to the master street plan to adjust the location of this connection to Highway 365. The Hudman Road connection is the only location having direct access to the plat, providing an at-grade crossing. The right-of-way is being provided to meet the requirements of RDOT to have a connection to Highway 365 until such time that the preferred connection can be constructed. The at-grade crossing supports only a local road, so the plat notes were added at the request of the county requiring a locked gate with a Knox box restricting access to only emergency vehicles until such time that Hudman Road is upgraded to meet city and county standards. Lastly, general notes six through twelve were added to the plat indicating the process to be followed for city of Maumell review of civil plans due to stated intentions to annex into the city of Maumell installation of street and drainage improvements and interchange access management, both from this parcel and future parcels interested in connecting. If you have any questions about those notes, I'd be more than happy to answer those. Staff recommends approval of the Newton Creek Commercial Preliminary Plat contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer, and planning commissioner comments. Staff also recommends planning commission initiate an amendment to the master street plan to accommodate the recommended connection to Highway 365 and classifications of roadway as shown on the Newton Creek Commercial Preliminary Plat. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer, Commissioner discussion? Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, I have a question, can we go ahead and vote on this prior to amending the, the master street plan? As you indicated, the, the master street plan doesn't support this, this request.
No, ma'am, actually the master street plan, the street plan supports the alignments. The local road that is showing from the lower roundabout to Hudman, we don't show local roads on the master street plan. The arterial section that is on there actually can be, it is shown as a collector on the master street plan. You can leave it as collector, and he can show it here, but he's providing sufficient right-of-way so that if it is upgraded to an arterial, then it can remain, it can be that. But if you prefer for it to remain a collector, then it still complies with the current master street plan.
So to make sure I understand this, we're asked to approve the preliminary plat, and everything on the preliminary plat is in compliance with our master street plan?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Fisher? Go ahead, Mary. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, sir. Same similar question, I think, where I got a little confused personally on that second paragraph in the staff analysis, that last statement says and recommend an amendment to the master, you know, MSP to just the location. So I, I got confused that we are or are not amending, because above it, it says there was no amendment needed, so we're saying we're not amending.
Well, no, staff is, staff is recommending that we move forward with an amendment to update all the items that need to be covered. But as far as the alignments of the roadways, that meets the master street plan. The classification of arterial versus collector is the only thing right now that, but ultimately, if you want, we're not designating, I guess right now, that road as it is would be designated a collector instead of an arterial, but they're providing sufficient right-of-way. I don't know if I'm describing that well enough, but I looked at that, and I was worried whether we'd be pulling the cart before the horse concerning the master street plan, and, but the alignments all meet on there.
I know it's proposed. Should we be going through Trap Road rather than Oak Grove Road?
That's correct, well, that's, that's what's being proposed, because to go through Oak Grove Road, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, to go through Oak Grove Road, you would have to go over Highway 365 and come back around to, to meet 365, which means you would be taking a lot of land and destroying a lot of businesses and other things, so that just wasn't a recommended location.
Mr. Johnson? Just to get my mind right, so preliminary plat, I mean, we do show, and I didn't look at the amendment plan, but Madam Attorney has it pulled up here, it's just a road through accessing, so how they go about accessing through this property is really still yet under consideration, if you will. Or they're going to have to come back, I mean, it's just a preliminary plat.
Correct, so, and, and really, if you look at this plat, it, it is just a technicality that Arkansas Department of Transportation needs to show a connection to 365. This has nothing to do with how the, how it's going to be developed or anything, it's just getting that connection, because they can't access it until we have something approved showing that.
A little semantical, is the, does the, the DOT request the upgrade on the master plan for the roadway? The width change?
I'm, I'm not aware that they necessarily, I haven't spoken to DOT, but I would assume that they would want the city, that's where the city would come in showing the support that, yes, this is the preferred location and route, and we do that through the master street plan amendment.
Well, the, the only, and I don't know what weight this merits with DOT in that process, I mean, it, the way that the cul-de-sacs are currently drawn, it, it has the appearance to me that the main access is going to be through Hudman Road, you've said that publicly, and it would be in the minutes, that that's not the case, but the, the island, the Yule Island is going toward Hudman, if the main traffic is to go south and tide, it was a trap, which I would see that noted on here, then that would actually be turned, that may be no big deal, I don't know. You follow what I'm, what I'm saying, Scott?
I do, and that's where the plat notes come into play, you can see where I discussed the Hudman Road, that it's not to be used at all, and it's more of a temporary, just to meet the needs for RDOT.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I have one more.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mike. I would like, on the exception piece, the lesson except, if you could, we kind of get lost in the topo there, I think we need to delineate that with maybe a little bit heavier of a line, and actually show the DOT taking on the, on the plat. It's shown as a lesson except, but I hadn't actually called Eric and asked him how, what the line was, so I, I could understand it, but I would just like that, that to be denoted a little bit darker. So it's, so it's clearer.
Commissioner Fisher, comments?
Yeah, clarification. RDOT is wanting a connection to 365, is that correct?
So all purpose.
But I think you got down here in the statement that the road that's going to be there is going to have a, it's going to be locked, so there's no access?
Top's connected.
Is that true?
Roy Andrews, Three Monarch Drive. So Hudman Road is only right-of-way of fifty feet, and it was a Mackey order right-of-way, so it's really just a local road with an at-grade crossing, and the county will not allow that to be an at-grade crossing, they want it to be upgraded, and to make it meet the master street plan, we would have to buy additional right-of-way there, because that's off our property. Through further analysis and study, that's where the Trap Road connection came in, but we don't own, our client doesn't own property all the way to Highway 365 to make that connection. We don't own, our client doesn't own property all the way to Highway 365 to make that connection. It is somewhat a technicality, but we have to show to get the RDOT connection, we have to show right-of-way that would get us there. And so that's what our intent is by this, to show that we will dedicate the right-of-way needed to provide access to 365.
Even though there isn't any access to 365?
Not at this time, but understand that just to get this done, there's a million and a half cubic yards of dirt that have to be moved. And those, that dirt can't be moved unless we can have access to the property. And right now, we can't have access to the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Isn't it strange that they want it, but then it says here that now it's gonna be a locked gate? What's the access? Didn't make sense.
They, the, the county just wanted to make sure this didn't turn into another short So they, they wanted the locked gate and they wanted it stated on the plat.
And, and one of the things you'll note on the plat notes, that I've got a notation for interchange access management, since this is a new connection to the interchange and it's completely undeveloped, we wanna make sure that all the adjacent parcels that we're controlling that process to make sure that no access is coming until, until a road has been approved by a preliminary plat and has been developed to meet the, the needs of the traffic and ingress and egress. So this was thought out. The owner, of course, as Mr. Andrews stated, needs access to the property to begin doing something to it, to even make it to where it can be utilized. By the approval of this preliminary plat, again, this is in the county. So right now, they have the access to do what they will, but they need the city's approval on the actual road alignments.
Has Union Pacific weighed in on any of this?
Uh, no, sir.
Further discussion? Does anyone have a motion?
Motion through the Newton Creek Commercial Edition. Preliminary plat in ETJ located at the White Oak Crossing Interchange, east of about 40 from the other staff or commissioner comments?
Second. A motion and a second and a discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes? Yes. Disposed, no? All right, motion passed.
Thank you.
Now move on to item number six, proposed code amendments, 6A, Section 94-101B. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, originally, we had, I think, we brought to the subcommittee four items. We've since taken two of those items off based on the discussion that we had. This item is for record number CAU-22-4, code amendment for site plan review, 94-101B. I'd like to thank Jason for his work in trying to get these updated for us. Basically, the proposed code amendment adds all commercial zones to the site plan review process. Projects within commercial zones have always been reviewed. However, this proposed amendment clarifies that all developments within commercial zones require site plan review, which has never been in there and we're not too sure why it's not. So you'll notice the number five edition of the C1, C2, and C3. Staff recommends a due pass recommendation to city council for the code amendment contingent on meeting all staff. Well, there's no engineer, but all staff and planning commissioner comments?
Thank you, Mr. Drummer. Commissioner's Discussion?
Should I make a motion for a due pass recommendation to the city council to amend the code at 94-101B?
Motion in a couple seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes? Yes. Disposed, no? We will issue a due pass recommendation. Subitem B, the amendment to Section 54-78. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, this is record number CAU-22-6, code amendment for land use amendment. The proposed code amendment clarifies the language on the initiator. Sorry about that. Maybe I'm getting too close. Proposed code amendment clarifies the language on the, on the initiator of land use amendments and clarifies that rezoning and land use amendments on the same property can be heard on the same agenda with the land use amendment shall be heard first while following all legal notice requirements. Staff recommends a due pass recommendation to city council for code amendment contingent on meeting all staff and planning commissioner comments.
I'll get back to my comment on Section 1, subsection C. I think it's a mistake removing the timing requirement. I mean, as we've seen this month, staff needs time to review things and removing a requirement that it has to be submitted 14 days prior to the day of the meeting, that needs to be left in there, in my opinion.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
I also agree. At the subcommittee, we wrote that we would keep that timeframe in. Again, take some notes on that. So we had said to keep it or retain it, retain that timeframe.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. We can add that back in.
Any further discussion?
I have a, just a question on that. Okay, so the land use, this is just addressing the land use amendment, 54-78. The staff initiates the land use amendment? So are we wanting the timeframe for zoning overall or, because we're, we're basically notifying ourselves?
Well, so the land use amendment and the rezonings are essentially the same. We, we put our notifications in the paper, but at the same point, we also require the applicant that's coming in for a rezoning of that property, we have them include that in the legal notice as well. So when a letter goes out to residents in the 300-foot area for a rezoning, they also go ahead and put in the land use amendment as well. And at the same time, the city, the city staff also puts the legal notice in the paper separately for the, for a land use amendment. So it's, the, the letters are going out for the rezoning that also includes the land use if it's applicable. And then the city staff as well puts a legal notice in the paper within that 15-day requirement that a rezoning also has. Does that clarify your que, your question?
Well, not really because, so I think they're asking for a zoning amendment and as part of a zoning amendment, we, as city staff, recognize that they have to have the land use amendment that accompanies that or they can't go forward. So the land use amendment being initiated by city staff, this is what is discussed here in Chapter 54. I'm just wondering if the, if the 14-day provision that I don't disagree with and think it probably should be longer, should be in zoning applications as opposed to
Correct.
this particular provision, which is strictly land use?
Correct. So the zoning application comes in typically is facilitated by a developer, landowner, doesn't necessarily come in from staff. And then when we respond to that with the land use recommendation, then, I mean, typically we're just coming in with a recommendation and determining that. So a 14-day, it's, I would refer back to Chapter 94 on zoning amendment as to the submission requirements for rezoning and the land use in Chapter 54 is more of just a land use change. But again, if there's a recommendation that comes outside of our department and requesting that, then it may make sense to leave the 14-day on there if it's not staff making that.
The 14-day requirement is stated in 94-9 on the application for movement for zoning. They do still have to file it 14 days in advance.
Okay. That's, I mean, I, I think it's a good failsafe. I mean, under subsection A, I mean, a, a land use proposal can be initiated by a city council, can be initiated by us, the mayor. It's practical matter that's probably going to be exceedingly rare if it ever does happen, but, you know, I think having this 14-day just guardrail is a good idea and to echo Ms. Madam City Attorney's comment, it's possibly more. Mr. Drummer, is 14 days enough? Do you need more time?
If you don't mind, if you don't want to jump in it, you know, it says 14 days, but if you think about when our, when our applications are due, applications are due on the first, are due on the first Thursday. So they're actually coming in 21 days before a planning commission hearing.
That matches the bylaws.
I'm sorry?
That matches the bylaws as well. That's what it says in the bylaws.
So, so I, I'm not, excuse my ignorance on the 14-day, that, because that doesn't make sense when we're requiring applications to be in at least 21 days prior. So the first Thursday, the first Thursday of the month. So we've already got that covered by being more than 14 days on just the application requirement. And at the same point, as a rezoning comes in, hopefully, the applicant has given us a pre-conference. Of course, we can, at that point, recommend that the land use also needs to be changed. So at that point, we're already 21 days out versus 14, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Williams?
Do we think all these numbers work, all of these timelines that are in the bylaws and that are in the processes that are in place now? We seem to have a heavy workload and...
There's only one timeline established in the bylaws that says all information or all applications should be made 21 days, if I remember correctly. I was trying to look it up on my phone.
It's 21 days.
It's 21. So it's just not specific to what the application is, what the application is for. It just says 21 days.
And the 21 days is the third, first Thursday of the month before the fourth Thursday?
Yeah, I think you're adhering to that. And sometimes it's not a time, but...
Conform both 94-9 and this. If we're, if we're going to keep a timeline here, we should conform both of them to 21 days if that's our actual practice.
I would agree. That, that gets us out of any questions of which supersedes which and if it's already 21 days, there's no reason not to. And I would make the comment to be passed on the city council, that it would be changed to 21 days.
For this item or for Chapter 94 as well?
Well, we've only got this one on our agenda today. It would probably best to do it for both, but since we've got this in front of us this month, that's my comment. But for a future amendment, yes, I would propose that for the other chapters as well.
I mean, Mr. Chair, I'm just wondering, since this is a, this isn't anything that I don't think is of a high priority, if we need to pull it back and bring it with both corrections, if that's...
One thing I might also, it, you know, we, we just talked about it could be initiated from somewhere else. It might make more sense to, to have it be the 21 days if initia, if initiated outside the department. Because the department itself, I mean, I think most of the time, it's Scott and Jason who are gonna initiate the land use amendment. I don't know.
I think they'll initiate it when they're ready, certainly.
Right.
Does that give enough time for the public? I mean, we, we have requirements and timelines that manage the whole process, so the work goes smoothly. But we also have, so there's sufficient time for the public to come in and see the documents and it's not something that they see a sign and they find out they've only, you know, two days to come in and see documents or something like that.
We've got more time than that. The sign has to be up 14?
What, I'm sorry?
Sign?
Uh, yeah, the sign is on, it's 15, I believe. Mr. Chair, I, I, I would recommend we just pull this, I mean, and, and try to get some clarification on some, some items.
Does anyone have a motion in that vein?
You want, you want to just defer it, Scott?
Tabled to next month.
Tabled to next month.
Or if you want to table it, let us get clarification on some items.
I lost my agenda. But only on 54-78 or both items?
No, just, just 54-78.
Okay. Because we voted on the, we, we have voted on 101B, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, motion to defer the amendment regarding Section 54-78 to the next regular scheduled Maumell Planning Commission meeting.
Motion and a second and a discussion. Those in favor, yes? Yes. Disposed, no? Will be tabled until next month. Now close the public hearing. We're going to liaison reports August 1. Commissioner Fisher?
August 1. Nothing major changes to the planning.
Report, August 15. Commissioner Winnick?
Yes. The third reading ordinance for 1070, it said enacting supplemental provisions of city code. It was passed and adopted, but I could not, without going back through a lot of the minutes, truly explain all of that because of way they do the readings. Under New Business Resolution, Resolution 2022-40, approving a preliminary development plan for Cypress Bend Phase 1 and 2, that was tabled to next city council meeting. Then first readings for ordinance 1070, amending Maumell land use plan, and 1072, amending Maumell zoning map were completed. And then I also want to provide additional comments by Councilman Mosley was requesting a workshop with the planning commission. His concern, I, I won't quote you, but my takeaway or your notes from your comments, some concern about the variances that might be bothersome for the future. And also to have some better understanding of long-term planning. He was complimentary that we're all team people and bright. I can't remember the exact word to use, but it might be beneficial for city council and planning commission to have some discussions or a workshop.
Did you mention anything about pay?
No.
Oh.
Did I phrase it or paraphrase it or?
We didn't, we didn't decide on anything. I just brought it up for discussion. There was a lot of head scratching, so I may bring it up again at the next one to see, see what your thoughts are. A lot of the questions were, well, what would we talk about? So we have to work on that. Thank you.
Did that include pay?
I supported many for not paying.
That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Winnick.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question based on her report. When there was concern about variances, how do we handle it when last month on a variance request, there were four people out of the six who expressed concerns about the process or the code that we have specifically for this gravel? Do we note that down at the end of the year? We look to see what came up as issues and we try to address it? Do we rely on staff to bring things forth when appropriate? How do we generally handle that?
I don't know if there's a general process for handling that, but you can approach staff, any of the council members, the mayor, the city attorney, about potentially initiating an amendment to the code to address those issues. But those can be addressed by amendment to the code at any time and certainly something like that would come before us for comment and then ultimately go on to city council, but it's not a once-a-year, twice-a-year type thing.
Thank you.
All right, so that's for September. September 6 is mine. September 19 is Commissioner Ramsey. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? Those in favor, yes? Yes. Disposed, no? We're adjourned.